Day.
No, no.
Thank you for being responsible. Okay, so I'm gonna just move on from public comment. We do have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. And before we, oh, actually, maybe I should have done this before public comment. I would like to move to amend the agenda to include a discussion about the Winhall School Board Report.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Where do you want to put that?
Why don't we put it after Sue, like 4B, like let's make it new 4C?
Sure.
Yep.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of approving motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, it's unanimous, thank you. Now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our November 19th, 2024 meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Meredith.
Second.
Second by Dean, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving our minutes from our November 19th, 2024 meeting, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 It's unanimous. Okay, so that brings us to the report of Superintendent of Schools. So Randy, I will turn it over to you and Sue.
Yeah, we'll turn it over to Sue. Yeah, I don't have much to share with you guys. It's pretty straightforward. I'm sure you read that we're at the close to 5% budget increase, but a pretty low tax rate increase.
So Sue.
And well, go our count, right? Like, so you know, your counts went up. Now they're sort of leveling off, which is great. We have a small change in our tuition students. Tax rate formula, a little more complicated this year, but the bottom line is they're the same. You know, when you, once you make an adjustment to FY25, it's easy for us to do the comparison. And I think that's how we're gonna present to the public because it's just a lot easier than trying to explain what the state's doing with the CLA. So I don't know, does anybody have any questions about the report that we included to sort of explain where we're at?
No, and I had gotten an email from a member of the public asking if the new formula helped us. And I'm like, it literally takes you to the same result. There's just like an intermediate calculation that tweaks it, but it's the same thing.
Same exact thing, just trying to make it not look so, it's not such a large variance between that district rate and the final rate.
Right.
Which is what it did. It absolutely is what it did, but it does make our district rate look like it shoots up. So that's why we want to be really careful about showing what that FY25 district rate would have been, had the adjustment been in place.
Yeah.
And then you don't really have a big change. And I think the tax rate actually goes down, right? And at just the district level, once you make that adjustment in FY25. So I shared with you what it might look like if we decided to drop some tax stabilization. But you know, as you drafted in your report, I don't see the need for it in this particular year. I don't think the tax rate increase is a great increase. It's not large.
Yeah, yeah, I kept the draft report in kind of higher level.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was good.
That was excellent.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Any other questions about the budget? Hearing none, we can move on to the warning.
Grab copies. I said he's out, I was in schools today, so.
I don't think so.
Dean, did you get a copy of the warning?
Well, do you have it electronically?
I don't have it electronically, but I think I can find it. Yeah.
Do you wanna have an action on the budget before we go to the warning?
Yeah.
Dean.
Oh, Dean's up. Okay, do you want to move the vote on the budget?
Yeah, and I just want to be clear because I do, you know, whether we move tax stabilization fund, that comes in under the warning, correct?
It does, the budget does. It, I can adjust the budget accordingly, but what you vote when you approve the budget is just the expenditure side of things.
Okay.
So we can make an adjustment to revenues, meaning tax stabilization if we need to. It won't affect your vote on budget.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve our FY26 budget?
So moved.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving our FY26 budget, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you.
Bosses.
Thank you.
Okay, we're trying to get this to you, Dean.
Give me two seconds, I'll have it shared with you in a second, Dean.
I'm good.
Come on, Dean.
You can just, you can just read it to me if you want.
It's too many, there's nine articles. I think only Scott Bushy can, I'm sharing it right now. Read the whole thing.
Dean, it's coming into you in a minute.
But it's something that you haven't seen before. You're up, Dean.
Yep, I got the signatures. I haven't, I just haven't turned it in to Beth yet.
Thank God, okay, good.
All right, I'm sending it to your BRSU email now.
Ow, I turned on the volume of the crazy.
The scanner?
Yeah.
And thank you for letting us just take over.
Yeah, go for it. All the billing, so. Yeah, I, that scanner gets really annoying.
I've got it, thank you.
Excellent. Okay, I felt like you turned it back up when we leave.
Whatever.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope your mom's good.
Okay.
Okay, so the warning, you all have the warning. You, I don't mean, I don't think we need to necessarily read it. I would just take a look at it. Oh, it's March 4th.
Great. Come out, school, great. We have to do it in the carpet here.
Good, anything?
So, yeah, I mean, and I put, I noted this, actually. If you want to read that draft, you brought extra copies. So I went ahead and prepared a draft of our report because I got an email saying that it was due December 27th. And like, that wasn't ever gonna happen because we didn't even have all of the data until like two days ago. So, but I did promise that I would get the report tomorrow. So I went ahead and kind of drafted it. And one of the things that I put in the second paragraph is, and this is just me speaking and we need to talk about it. I would recommend that we do not take money from the tax stabilization fund to level the tax rate from, you know, our current tax rate. We are within the realm of our historic tax rate. And by my calculation, and Sue, you can tell me if I'm wrong. If we, it looks like if we don't use tax stabilization funds, our tax rate would be $1.8922.
A dollar, what, 1.8452 is the final tax rate.
Eight four.
It's in your general packet.
Okay, 1.8452. So that is within the spectrum of our historic rates.
Right, and you have your historic rates are on packet page eight.
Right. So that's kind of one reason. I guess I'm not really a fan of buying down the tax rate because in my mind, that tax stabilization fund is really there in years when we're right up against the penalty and we're trying to keep ourselves out of penalty. And we are nowhere close to penalty. And I think.
No one can afford to live here.
No one can afford to live in Vermont. I mean, Winhall is not unique. And frankly, I mean, it appears that our tax rate increase is significantly lower than rate increases projected in the rest of the state.
Yeah, I don't think you can, you can't, I don't think, I don't think there's anything wrong with you saying that because it was a published letter from the governor. I think from having a conversation about it, that, that I don't believe that that tax rate increase has any merit. They have no numbers when they're working with that.
Well, and like last year, when the December 1st letter came out, the projected tax rate was significantly higher than what it ended up being.
Yeah, I mean, the projected tax rate, I think what Sue's point is, is literally made up, made up in incomplete numbers.
It's made up.
I'm just being very frank with you. It's if you've been doing that. So it is either speculative or it's omitting because we don't usually submit.
No, and many people.
Because we won't.
So we don't have the data.
So obviously, that's a difficult way to determine a number that people set such value in, but it is the reality.
Speculative is the right word. I mean, and I think that they probably use some measures to be able to make estimates of what percentage increases of ed spending might be out there. But there's more than just ed spending that goes into the mix. Right, you have a 4.9 increase in our budget. That is not what you're seeing in the tax rate because that count is, plays a big part in what produces the tax rate. You gotta count one up. So the yields also do not have as big of a change as I would have expected. And, and it could still change. So, yeah, I don't, there's anything wrong with making the comparison. But right now, we really don't know what anybody else's tax rate is doing. What we're seeing in our S U is everybody's going down.
Why do I see 179 on page six?
So on packet page six, 179 is the FY25 rate. 184 is the FY26 rate.
Okay.
And that, that, I'm sorry, the 184 is without moving tax stabilization funds.
Correct, that is with using the, the small surplus, right? Like, oh, no, we're not even using the surplus because I think we're moving that to tax stabilization. So, yeah, we're not even using that. We're using nothing, right? It's just your, it's just your straight tax rate.
Of 179.
And we are also recommending not using tax stabilization.
No, I thought you were. That's why I didn't include it. No, I gave you a chart to show you what it would look like if you did, if you wanted to have a conversation. But we're not recommending any transfer.
Right.
I think the strongest argument for not using tax stabilization is that we can only put in it when we have a surplus. And I, I don't think we're gonna be in a position to add to it anytime soon. So, you know, we would definitely want to preserve it for years when we're way up against the law, which this is not that.
But the. What you're thinking about, Jennifer, and I'm sorry, I should have said this because I just have so many buttons in my head that it's totally spaced on. Is we have a small deficit. And that is, that's where, that's where that money is coming from, that $41,000. So if you look at package page 11, we have a small deficit of just, bless you. So what I'm recommending is that rather than roll that into the tax rate, we use tax stabilization to cover that. But it's just to cover the deficit. So it's not really to reduce your FY26 tax rate per se. Because you don't have to raise that deficit. You can carry that deficit and see what happens next year. I just kind of like to do things clean and get rid of them.
Yeah, I agree with that. So I guess where I'm confused is I'm back on packet page four. The third bullet says 107910 would be needed to keep the tax rate level.
Right.
But you're, you're not actually.
I'm not, that's not built in. That's just a point of information. Yes, exactly.
Okay.
On the stock stabilization reserve, are we getting a higher investment rate given interest rate, the interest rate environment?
Yes, the treasurer has been investing in CDs. So we can get that like 4.5%. It's why you see your interest number go up so much. And we will be talking about when, she and I will talk about cash flow wise, when to do the next CD.
Because that's substantial.
Oh, yeah.
It's like a huge amount of money. And so we should, we should also consider that before we pull money out of a stabilization reserve, the fact that we can actually earn substantial.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean.
It's.
It is real money.
It is, but we, when we do, when we.
$45,000 a year.
When we put it into a CD, we have to consider what our cash flow needs are and when that money's actually gonna be available. Because if we didn't have that money to draw from when we got low, then we would have to borrow. We've been in positions where we've had to borrow before. So typically, what, what used to happen before we had this tax stabilization reserve is the town would be generous in fronting us some of the ed fund money. But, you know, they were collecting in taxes before it was actually due to us just so that we could make our bill payments for the first semester tuition, which we would not be able to do if they weren't able to give us some money. Or we would have to borrow. We've done that in the past as well. With this money in the bank, we don't have to do that. So what we do need to do is make sure we have enough cash flow to pay everything. So now we're in, in the space where we've now collected our ed fund money from the town. And we can do a cash flow projection for the remainder of this school year. And we can do another CD and earn more interest. So that's the expectation. Twice a year, we can do it, but we have to pay attention to our cash flow. I don't want to do it before you guys make this decision because that plays into it as well. So once the budget is voted and the decisions are made, then she and I can talk about cash flow and she can go forth with another CD.
Okay, and then I'm just going back to page 11 with the fund balances. And so just going through and verifying or confirming that we've only, or we're only planning to withdraw $41,253 to cover the deficit for FY25.
Correct, yes, exactly.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Okay, any other questions?
I think it's such a healthy tax stabilization. Truly great.
Yeah, it's a good spot for the town to be in. Okay, any other comments on the warning?
I'm just reading it, okay. Okay. That's good to me, I know there are questions.
Okay, so do you want to vote on it?
Are we ready for a vote?
On the warning?
Motion to approve. Where'd I go? The warning. 2025 School District?
Well, it's FY26.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Okay, all right, I move that we approve the warning for Winhall Town School District warning for FY26.
Second.
Okay, Meredith.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the motion, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, thank you. Okay, and then this brings us to the proposed report. So I had sent this to Randy and Sue and had a couple of comments, which I flagged in the notes because Sue, you know, had a couple of comments that I then incorporated. So you guys should have that updated language. But it, basically, they're both in the second paragraph. First amendment is that we anticipate that our homestead tax rate in FY26 will increase by 2.6%. And then I changed the second sentence to say, after consideration, we decided not to transfer money out of our tax stabilization fund to bring down the rate for three reasons and then the reasons followed. So those were my two changes. Thanks to Sue. Are there any other changes anyone sees?
I think it's fine.
I thought it was really good, yep.
Thank you. Meredith, you're reading? I don't want to rush you.
Um, no, I've already read it. It is, it was excellent.
Okay. So if there are no further changes, then I will entertain a motion to authorize me to send it out. You want to need a motion?
No.
I'm just gonna do it.
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever, I do what I want.
All right, well, thank you, guys.
I expect to see that on March 4th. All right, so election information, this is just for your information. Dean, we want to make sure, yes, you're all in and.
Yep, I'm good. I have, I have to vet some of the signatures because I'm pretty sure some people that don't live in Winhall signed it. So I just have to make sure I have enough. But I'll, I'll have them by the 27th, no problem.
Okay, perfect. And then you got this month's superintendent report, I think, in here. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. You know, there's a lot going on. This is a different type of report than I typically write, but I felt like it was important to communicate. I tend to approach January, for whatever reason, with this mid-year state of the state mindset. And so that's kind of the, the voice that I took in writing it. And I think that it's, it is sort of a, this is what's going on. And, and I wanted to be sure to communicate to all boards the reality of what we're facing. There's, there are many, many challenges right now and we're not immune to them. And we've got some really important things to be talking about as we look ahead. And I wanted to just really share those with folks. So as we, as we do look ahead, we are conscious of, of things we need to be thinking about. So I'm happy to talk through anything you want.
I just, I thought this was such a strong and powerful report. I really did.
Thank you.
And brave, bold, I mean, just, I really appreciate the clarity that you provided. And I love the whole paragraph about public education as well as, you know, this misperception about what high test scores mean. And I thought that was really, really helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All right.
Okay, so the other thing is the work plan attached. I, we don't have a legislative or V S P A update, but I, I guess I would say to you that if you, I did say in my report, I really encourage everyone to stay on top of the V S P A updates. There are, there are gonna be a lot of sources of information. But I think that you as board members staying on top of that, this latest legislative session is really important. Included this, just from yesterday's report, is a letter from Governor Scott with dates of reports coming from the Agency of Education on a whole host of topics. And I don't think there's anything that is super surprising to me, probably not to you either. But I would argue that probably much of what we talked about are things that connect in some way to some of what is in my report. So if you can attend to, to those sessions or read any written information that comes out, I think it's worth it. There are many indications of what's to come. And I, I just, I certainly don't want boards to be surprised I'm trying to stay on top of it and stay a little bit ahead of it if I can by, by reading between the lines of what is coming out. So I think that that's important. And, and Dean, we haven't talked at all about sort of weekly board chair meetings like we've done in the past, where we've had that evening meeting of just the, you know, BRSU, TNG, Winhall and Meadowwee board chairs to talk. But I, I do anticipate that happening, particularly this session. So, you know, the other boards haven't necessarily taken a vote. But, but in the past, Dean sat in just to ensure that there's no blurred lines. And I would recommend that you agree to that, to do that again, should those meetings start.
Yeah, I think that'll be good.
So. Yeah, can you say, are you willing to do it?
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's a very, very, very interesting time for the state, so.
Yeah, I think things are very much in flux. I think there are gonna be a lot of changes.
I do too. And I said, and, you know, we have, this, this is our third board meeting of the week. This is, this is not my favorite, favorite week for board meetings. It's a lot. But on Monday night, I made a comment about courage. And I said, you know, that something has to change at the state level, in my opinion. And I, I wonder if the state has, in the state, with somebody from the governor's office or the Agency of Education or the legislature, have the courage to really take big steps to address the, the wide scope and depth of need. And I talked to him, like, I don't know. It is gonna take courage. And we had a representative in the audience at that meeting who kind of picked up on the same thing and said, you're right. It is gonna take courage. And I'm not sure either. We'll see.
Yeah.
But, but I think, I think there's, there's big changes on the horizon, so.
Vermont Digger also has like their legislative update that you can sign up to get email updates with what's going on, which has been really helpful.
Yeah, there's probably a lot of sources of.
What do you think is the, the number one thing that will change this year?
Yeah, that, you're asking me to read the tea leaves. Or I feel like, I feel like low hanging fruit is a minimal glass size. And I, I think that is one of the things that will, at a minimum, be talked about, if not go into play. I think there's probably gonna be discussions around school sizes and closing small schools and consolidating. Question is, how do they approach all of that?
We go back to the bus and kids on the bus and how long they're on the bus and.
It'll come down to some of the busing, transportation. Kids are on buses for a long time, all over the country. In urban areas, kids can be on a bus for 90 minutes. Right. To be going three miles. You know, like, issues are issues when we make them. So, and obviously, 90 minutes is a long time for kids. And I'm just, I'm not, I'm just saying. I'm just, my point is just that there's, I don't advise that we should do 90 minutes. I'm just simply saying that, that there are long bus rides all over the place.
We get busted in the air.
Yeah, right, right. So anyway, who knows? I don't know, but I, I think, I think that there are, I think there are solutions. It's gonna take a lot of courage.
Yeah.
Be interesting.
Yeah.
All right.
I have a minor board update. It's not really pertaining to us, but I figure you guys would probably want to know about it if you haven't already heard. There is a push within the community. There's going to be a petition. I don't know if it's gonna get the right number of signatures to expand the select board from three to five in Winhall. There was some chatter about the same for the school board, but I don't think that that's gonna come to fruition this year. But I expect that if the select board does get expanded to five, that that may be something in future years that might come on the table. And for the record, I did volunteer to run for one of those two select board slots if they do get the petition signed and it does pass. So I just figured you guys want to know that.
Can you do both, Dean?
As far as I know, yes.
Oh, good.
I don't know what would preclude that. And what's the, the driving force behind expanding the select board or excuse me?
Well, there's a, there's a couple of different reasons. Me personally, the argument that I found most convincing is the perspective of institutional knowledge. We had a situation a few years back where, you know, we lost a select board member unexpectedly and there wasn't anyone waiting in the wings to take that position. And so the select board was pretty well diminished for a couple of years until Julie Isaacs ran for that slot and, you know, really decided to make it a priority and, and slotted in there, I think, really well. But, you know, we have, there's really not a lot of younger people or even just people that are on the periphery that are learning how the business of the town is conducted. And so when we lose someone from that select board, unless they've trained someone to do that job, there's no one there that knows how, how decisions are made and what, what priorities are and what things have to happen. So for me personally, the most convincing argument is that if you have two junior board members, for lack of a better term, I mean, they wouldn't be junior in any real capacity, but you can look at it that way, that can learn, you know, on the job. Then when you rotate, you know, someone out due to age or, you know, an unexpected death or an illness, there's gonna be a lot less of an impact on the town. And you're gonna have people who are ready to go, who know how that job is done and are prepared to take that spot.
Yeah, that's, that's good forward thinking, Dean.
Because I mean, it's one of the things that, you know, I'm most concerned about is you have people on select board now with, you know, 20, 30 years of experience in that role. And they don't think, they don't have to think about a lot of these things. It's subconscious, it's second nature. They know what has to be done and they do it. And that's great, you know, from getting things done perspective. But it leaves a big gaping hole if that person is suddenly not able to do the job anymore. And it takes time to onboard somebody to the point where they can just seamlessly transition into, you know, doing the job. And you lose stuff. I mean, you absolutely lose stuff along the way if you don't have somebody who's being, you know, brought into that. You know, I was very fortunate when I joined this board that I had Marty Nadler, who, you know, sort of convinced me to run and then, you know, took the time to show me, you know, how to do the job and what was important and, and how to, and how to be responsive to, to needs. And so I feel like I'd like to see that, you know, going forward in, in the select board.[1781.61] I, I, I don't know that I, I feel like the school board needs to be five people because of, I don't think the workload is the same. I think that, you know, we're very fortunate that the supervisory union does a lot of the heavy lifting for us. And so it's, but the other, the, the other thing is, it's also open meeting law, right? Like the three of us, any two of us can't have a conversation about board business outside of an official public meeting without technically violating open meeting law. If you go to a five-person board, then you can have to, you could have a conversation with another board member about board business without it being considered a meeting. And I think that's an important thing too. So there's a, there's, there's some, there's some convincing arguments why I think five makes sense. I think there's a lot of like traditionalism that has to be overcome. I don't, I don't know how it's going to play at town meeting, it's certainly going to come up, there's going to be a conversation about it. I think some people are going to be resistant to it, but I think it's worth having the conversation, for sure.
Thanks, Dean.
Yeah. You're very busy. All right. Legislative V S B A update, there really is not one. Agenda items for next meeting, do we want to do like a Q and A, potentially?
It's up to you. There's really not a lot to say.
I think you can ask for public comment and that's
Yeah, okay.
Kind of the Q and A, I mean, honestly.
Going back to like prior years where we did have more to talk about.
Yeah, I don't think last year we had a lot of participation because there wasn't as much to talk about last year. But the year before was the year we were really talking about stuff.
Yeah.
Year before. Yeah.
I think we had a bigger participation.
Yeah.
So, okay. So agenda items are getting ready for town meeting day, anything else?
Yeah, I don't think I'm getting urgent right now.
Okay.
I might get one at slow.
I know.
Nice.
All right, this takes us back to public comment.
Brendan.
Would you like to say anything?
Sure, yeah, I, just, you know, I know that, I was looking through, I saw Mark sent a letter a little bit about their tuition and their, the, on their petition and just kind of what our tuition and when we built our, kind of, looking at our, our budget at the Mounts of Wind Hall. We went from how can we keep our costs down as much as we possibly can? So we had a three and a half percent budget increase is what we have. And that's what that number is, that is on our warning. That is primarily so that we can continue to have our educators at the school. So we had lower than a lot of places, but we did have our benefits go up about twelve percent this year, our, our, our healthcare. So better than a lot of places, but we do look around to make sure that we're cost containing that. And then part of our cost containment policy or practice that we've done since then is reevaluating all of our external vendors that we work with. And have all the services and ensuring that we're staying competitive with that. And, and that's, that's made some hard choices where we had to change some of the people we work with. And, but in doing what's in best for ultimately taxpayers and myself. As a Wind Hall resident, it makes it every decision that we make with the board is even more impactful knowing that I'm also taking these taxes as well, that as well. So we built our initial budget and put that number together back in December so that we didn't have the warning and then vote on it as well. So that is, that is, and when we built our budget, we have almost fifteen percent of our budget is in fundraising. So we set an annual benchmark now of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in fundraising. And then if we end up with a, a difference, then, you know, that's more fundraising that I get to finally, I get to do. But that being said, you know, we're really trying to go back to, when I came on, I looked back to the original documentation of when the Mountain School Wind Hall was founded and some of the original ethos of the school. And just in reading kind of what Mark had said, I know that the Mountain School Wind Hall is not a quote unquote town academy. There isn't an elementary school town academy, but it was written in our initial documents and opening that all Wind Hall students would be accepted at the school and that they would not pay above what they, above what the town would pay tuition for. So that's where that ask comes from. So that's, that's where all of those pieces come from and trying to make that number, you know, we're really working hard to make it so that it doesn't affect the taxpayers.
I appreciate that the tax or that the increase was two hundred and ninety dollars and you guys still didn't like round up to three hundred.
Yeah, I mean, we, like I said, we, that, the numbers on there, obviously we know what those numbers are, but we build a budget based on how we need to run the school and, and build it in on, on, you know, try to, try to look at kind of as Randy said, the crystal ball, we're trying to figure out where our enrollment is going to be. But because we can't really do our enrollment until after town meeting day because we need to know what, what our tuition is actually going to be. But that, that's, that's what we're doing and that's kind of the philosophy that the board's taken of putting this petition in each year is so that, you know, we, so that we can start to plan so that, that I can actually hire teachers and start to figure out contracts for them. And I'm not into, because then I miss the hiring season almost if I can't even start to think about contracts and tuition.
So one thing I do, I do notice is that your cost is substantially higher than the other independent schools who are K through six, and they are not getting the incremental money.
So their, their tuitions are, some of them are much more than that. And then they're shouldering that onto the families. We're trying to be true to the ethos of when the school opened to staying true to that. We're not, you know, we're making up that, that the rest of the deficit of other schools or the rest of that money in fundraising.
So they, there's an article in the morning asking
Right, for the extra money, but I guess my question is, you know, why is it that the other K through six schools are not asking for the extra money? You know, you're looking at, you know, Maple Street with K through six, you're looking at Long Trail has a six. I, I guess my, my question is, you know, if, if you really want to maintain kind of a level playing field at all in terms of, of having it be choice. I mean, it's by, by saying, okay, the town is going to a hundred percent subsidize one school over another. I'm not, you know, last year I kind of understood because it was a challenging year. But I, I do want to put it out there that it is, it seems odd to me that one school is kind of, especially for a K through six, it doesn't have seven and eight, it's not a high school, it's not B B A. Why we're kind of bending and accommodating one school versus another school? I'm sure it's challenging for all the schools to raise money in this economic time. And so I guess I'm just kind of preemptively saying that I think, you know, I don't have children who are in K through six at, at other schools. But if I was sitting here and I went to town meeting and I saw this, I'd be like, huh, why is it that Mountain School keeps getting money whereas, you know, Maple Street or Long Trail don't?
Although to be fair, Mountain School put together a petition.
Mountain School asked and, and they, and they asked for it and I, and I, and I get it.
Decide whether the voters
And the voters will decide, I guess my, my question is, it's, you know, it just seems like it's, you know, one year was one thing to save the school, but now coming back every year with the incremental difference of, hey, we can't raise this, seems like, I just, it seems like a precedent, that's all. I don't know if you, I just wanted to stay that in, in terms of my, just because it, it seems like, you know, Maple Street and, and Long Trail and some other schools should maybe get on the bandwagon or not or whatnot.
Mountain School is the only one who submitted a petition, petition and the voters, it's all following the process. And, and they have a right to do that and they did what they need to do.
And they did, yeah.
And other people didn't.
And other people didn't, yeah, I totally
This conversation may happen right on the floor.
I think it's going to happen on the floor, yeah.
And, and this is what your community will grapple with.
Yeah, because eventually it's, you know, it's, one school is this small amount. But if you kind of open up the kitty for all the schools, it's not such a small amount.
Correct.
It's going to be a much larger amount and that is concerning. At least I think it, it's not, I just think it's just, you know,
Well, your voters will
The voters will decide, they will decide, but I think that, you know, second year in a row, you will see people come out and this will be an interesting conversation, yeah.
I, I can't comment on what anybody else is doing. I, I do know that the, I, all, all I do know is that those, I think, I would have to, you'd have to talk to their heads on there.
I'm not really concerned about them, I'm concerned more about why coming back. I'm not really concerned about them, I'm just more concerned about the incremental difference in coming back and writing the petition and keeping coming back as being a precedent and then
Well, there's no precedent if they have to file a petition every year, but
But it, it, but it is if we keep kind of, I, I just, this wasn't something that we had done in the past.
No, that's, we actually used to do it.
We used to do it eleven years ago when I first moved here, then we stopped because
Like in penalties.
Right, and then, so, but I think part of the, and it wasn't just Mountain School, it used to be Maple Street and all the schools was when we used to cover the tuition entirely for all the schools. But I think
No.
It was, it was Maple Street, when I first moved here in twenty thirteen, it was a hundred percent covered.
No.
Maple Street was one hundred percent covered when I moved here, twenty thirteen.
We had kids in school in twenty thirteen and it was not covered in full. We got the, whatever the, the voters in Wind Hall approved and then we had, and then we had to pay the difference.
But when I went, that difference, from my understanding, from, I could go back and double check, that was a very, I don't remember there being, I thought it was a hundred percent covered for two, at least two to three years from twenty thirteen to about twenty sixteen. And then it was taken off, I'll, I'll go back and check.
I mean, I paid those
I, I paid them too. I, I, I paid it too.
Yeah.
So, but what I'm saying is when it, when it started to like, it just, it, it's, it's easy to come back to the till when the till is big. But when the till is, you know, now we're moving into kind of more owners' tax situation, possibly, you know, I, I just, I just wanted to put it out there.
Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none. Our next meeting will be February eleventh at five thirty P M in the Wind Hall Town offices or virtually. So if there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So move. I'll second, all those in favor? Aye.
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 All right, please stand with adjournment, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.